And ask you to stand for the pledge allegiance. Good morning and welcome to the July 26, 2022 County Commission meeting and welcome to our new remodeled space for our viewing audience. We are now located on the north end of the third floor and this is our first day, so we will probably be working out kinks in the next couple of weeks when we find something that doesn't work quite right. So, welcome to our new space. We're obviously very excited about it, too. I would remind you to silence your cell phones. Listening devices are available. From Tyler here, sitting at the front desk. Meeting documents are in the back. We have a white binder if you need them and there's a sign-in sheet also if you're going to speak. If you'd please sign in with your name and address at the door. And then, if you have something on the consent agenda you want removed, this is the time to request that. Okay, we'll move on with regular business. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion as second to approve the agenda. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
A motion as second. Roll call vote.
Barth.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Hamburger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next is the opportunity for public comment. If you have something that is not on today's agenda that you would like to speak about, and if you just give your name. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Leroy Matthew at 5806 West Parakeet Place. And one of the things about being retired, you have a little extra time. So being we have two new offices coming up downstairs, our Register of Deeds and our Auditor's Office, I just thought I'm gonna look and see what kind of wages we're actually getting. And I'll tell you, I was just flabbergasted when I looked down and saw the discrepancy between the three equal branches down there. I could not believe that there's $28,000 difference between what the auditor is paid and what the treasurer's paid. $15,000 or give or take a little because of the Register of Deeds. Can you give me a good reason why they're not equal? I don't care who answers it.
You know what, Mr. Matthews, at public comment, we don't answer questions at this point. We can get back to you with answers, but this is just public comment and not response from-
Okay, then I'll keep on going right on. The last election, we ended up with a new treasurer. And I want to add, I would like to have the answer to why or does this treasurer get the same dollars that the outgoing treasurer got? Okay? With our county auditor was replaced in the middle of the deal because Bob retired, does he, does this auditor get the same pay as what the outgoing one did? Okay, we are gonna have two, two new, I know we're gonna have two new commissioners, and thank you Cindy and Jeff for the years you've put in, you know, on the board. So are they gonna get equal pay? Not the same as you, because I know you get a little bit more because you're better than they are. No. But anyway, are they gonna be equal, or is there some adjustments gonna be made? And my suggestion is, is that you come up with an even pay scale and it remains there for all three of them downstairs. I have no problem with the sheriff. That position should have no less than 25% more than what the other three positions. It's kinda like farming and being in the dairy business. You're on call 24/7, 365 days a year. And I think that warrants a pretty good increase over what the other ones are getting. So, if you can get back to me sometime, I would love to hear the answers to those. But I would suggest, while I'm up here, that your coming budgets, that you make all of those equal, so that whoever's running for that position knows exactly what their pay is gonna be and not finding out after they have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to speak for public comment?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Vicki Burr and I'm resident, Sioux Falls. And I am here to talk about election integrity. I know you're all tired of this, but there are some things from our primary election that I would like to address. One of those being election crimes. And there were multiple voters at the downtown library that were allowed to vote, one of them being someone from a foreign country with no passport. He was allowed to vote. And there were other things that were happening at the downtown library that concerned us. And my question for the commission would be, what are we gonna do about this election stuff that's happening? We have a general election coming up in a few months, and I, as a citizen of Sioux Falls and the state of South Dakota, want to know that we have free and fair elections. And allowing someone from a foreign country to vote is not fair to people here in the state of South Dakota. There are multiple duplicate voters on the voter rolls that voted at absentee ballot, and then they went to the poll and voted. So how are these being allowed to stay on the voter rolls? It is up to the county auditor to maintain the voter rolls, but ultimately, it goes to the Secretary of State. And it's pretty obvious in conversations with Steve Burnett that he is not aware that there are duplicate voters even on the voter rolls. So who's responsible for that? I mean, this is Minnehaha County, and you all represent Minnehaha County. And we need to be able to let the citizens of Minnehaha County know that our elections are fair for everyone involved. I'm gonna go back to the training of the poll workers. I did some poll watching at six different polls. None of them followed what they were supposed to be doing. And one of those things is, they, when a voter would come up to them, they would say, "I would like to have your driver's license, please." And it states right in their training that the poll, that the voter is to state their name. None of them did. No voter stated their name. They only took the driver's license. So that concerns me, you know, that our poll workers are not doing what it says in the training. And the ballot issue in Valley Springs, I have a form here where it shows that all the ballots are counted. How did a very young, early 20-year-old get to be a supervisor when she has no election experience? So here they have a whole unopened pack of ballots, and she thought they ran out. So voters had to wait. So, training is a huge issue with the poll workers. And I think you, as county commissioners, need to look at how are our poll workers trained to make sure that our November election works the way that it's supposed to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. Anyone else who would like to speak at public comment?
Madam Chair, they need to sign the, if they have not signed the speaker list by the door over here.
Yes, I reminded you, but if you have not signed the speaker list, please make sure you put your name and address on so we can contact you. Is there anyone else that wants to speak for public comment today? Okay, with that, we will go on to regular business. Item number 10, is a public hearing in second reading for the rezoning of number 22-06 to consider an amendment to the 1990 revised zoning ordinance for Minnehaha County to rezone from the A1 agricultural district to the rural, to the RR rural district. Kevin Hookman, good morning.
Good morning. I am Kevin Hookman from the County Planning Department. This request is a rezoning request number 2206. The request is to rezone approximately 7.14 acres from A1 agriculture to rural residential. The property is located approximately three and a half miles west of Sioux Falls along Highway 38. And it's also adjacent to the Songbird Acres subdivision. You can see in that site map there that it's located near residential subdivision. The property currently has one residential building on the property itself. Rural residential zoning request would allow up to one residential dwelling for every acre property. So, but the petitioner's request has a draft layout of five total lots. So it'd add four new residential lots to this property if this was approved. Staff has written concerns in the staff report regarding septic systems, roads, and also the precedent that may be set on the rezoning request. If this is approved, it'll likely lead to additional requests in the area that would be more and more residential zoning, taking up additional agricultural land. The Planning Commission heard this item on June 27. The Planning Commission unanimously voted to recommend denial of the request. Since then, or prior to the Planning Commission meeting, staff received one letter, and then after meeting, we received a petition with several neighbors signing the petition regarding denying it. This morning, I received another petition with a few more names. I can't recall exactly how many. I have it here. But about the same number of names, another dozen or so names signing petition. I do know that several neighbors are here, and I'm sure the petitioner's here as well. With this action, let's see, I'll go through maybe some of the photos if we can. Oh, yeah, that screen.
Again, our first meeting in this room and, well, second counting last night's.
Go down a little more. So, here's the, so on the screen right now is the concept plan. It shows the four lots that would be added to the property and where the existing house is. If we can go further down. And then we'll just breeze through a few photos. This is looking down to the site from the north, the access to the property. This is up close to the property where the development would go right along the road to the right side of the photo. This is looking back towards the house. And then, one more, I think. And then this is the road, again, that the access points for the proposed properties would go against, or be access off of this road. So, with that in consideration, oh, there's one more photo. This is looking back up to the house from the bottom part of the yard. And then this is a, this is not on the proposed property. This is a wetland just below the proposed property a little ways. So if we can go maybe back to the site plan. With the rezoning, the Board of County Commissioners, their action is to either approve or deny the rezoning request. And I am here for any questions in the public hearings, so others will be able to come and speak.
Thanks, Kevin. Are there any questions for Kevin at this point on the information? Kevin, where's the access on this, on this map? Access to that off, is it on this map where the access is to the new area?
Road.
The road?
So, there are several roads in the subdivision. So that, on this map right here, you'll see on the top, there's Dorothy Lane. And that runs through the whole subdivision. And then on the left side of the page, there's Cardinal, Cardinal Drive, I believe is what it is. And that already has, oh, probably five houses on the west side of the Cardinal Drive. And then this stretches north and south along there, and all the accesses would be on that Cardinal Drive.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions for Kevin? Okay, this is a public hearing, so first we'll hear from the proponent, the person who would like to make this change. And then we will hear from the opponents, and then we'll come back to the proponents for rebuttal. So if there's anyone who would like to speak in favor of this rezoning. There's no one here that would like to speak in favor of this rezoning. Okay, so we will turn it over to the opponents. Is there anyone who'd like to speak against this rezoning?
Good morning. My name is Celia Benson. I live at 26132 South Robin Drive. I grew up on a farm just a few miles north of Songbird. I left the area for college and only bought the home on Robin Drive in 2010 to be near our daughter. Our granddaughter has boarded the school bus from our Robin Drive home. Furthermore, I am one of four tenants in common of the land in the northeast quarter of Section 32 that abuts the rezoning request property in Lot 1. Our farm was homesteaded by my great-great-grandfather's brother. It came into our immediate family's possession in the 40s, and it has been operated by our family since that time. I was not able to attend the June 27 Planning Commission meeting, but I streamed the video of that meeting. I was pleased to see how many Songbird residents attended that meeting and spoke in support of the planning staff recommendation to deny. Many of these same residents could not attend this meeting this morning. So two of us from the development circulated a petition to support the recommendation to deny the rezoning request. Tony even turned in his petition with 27 signatures to deny the rezoning request, and I understand you have received access to that petition. In addition, this morning, I turned into Kevin a petition signed by an additional 18 Songbird residents in support of the Minnehaha County Planning Commission recommendation to deny the rezoning request. As I streamed the video of the meeting, I noticed a comment by one of the Planning Commission members that the township roads look to be in good condition. And as I see the pictures this morning, that that would be the case. And in general, that is a true statement. However, Cardinal Drive, the one on the left here, is an exception due to a soft roadbed. Three years ago, Cardinal Drive was impassable and barricaded for all but homeowners living in Cardinal Drive. At that time, the school district notified families affected by the road closure that students should board the school bus at 261st Street and Highway 38. And 261st Street really comes right off of Highway 38. It is north of Dorothy Drive that you're seeing here. There's another four homes on that street. A student living in Cardinal Drive on the west side, and my granddaughter boarded the school bus at that 261st Street and Highway 38 location from approximately the end of March till the end of the school year in May. Two years ago, Benton Township added rock to the road base along with loads of gravel, but it is still often soft. And it is still not unusual for the road to be barricaded for other than local traffic because of that soft condition. Benton Township Board members, Dave Zant and Ryan Andreessen, acknowledged the ongoing challenges for the township with the Cardinal Drive roadbed. And they agree adding four more dwellings to Cardinal Drive would increase the pressure on an already problematic section of roadbed. As stated by planning staff, the envisioned 2035 plan describes a transition area like Songbird Acres to have the primary purpose of maintaining a rural landscape. And the plan further states residential development should be limited unless adequate sanitary sewer and water available. And then, as Kevin mentioned this morning, road conditions. As the urban area of Sioux Falls continues to grow, and as research and technology develop more sustainable ways for growth in the years ahead, I am confident that ideas such as the conservation subdivision now being implemented in the Des Moines area will become more commonplace and provide more optimal land use planning. I encourage you to accept the Minnehaha County Planning Commission's recommendation to deny this request for rezoning. And I thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Benson. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition to this zoning? Seeing none, and there's still, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this? Feel no one present. Okay, so commission, looking for action from you?
Madam Chair.
Or questions from staff?
Ms. Benson was very articulate in her comments. And honestly, this is at the very end of Songbird Estates. And the roads are narrower. It will be eventually annexed into the city of Sioux Falls, and they'll have sewer. Right now, they're on septic on top of the hill, you know, where it then drops off down towards the waterway. And I think we discussed it pretty thoroughly at planning and zoning. And I will make a motion to uphold the planning and zoning denial.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion as second. Additional conversation? Commissioner Karski?
Kevin, is this like right on the edge of the joint jurisdictional boundary? I mean, it looks like it's within three miles. So is it like feet from being joint jurisdictional?
Yeah, it's pretty close. I would say it's probably about a half a mile, though, still. The city of Sioux Falls is allowed to extend out three miles from their city boundaries. And yeah, this is about three and a half miles from the city.
Okay. I'm gonna support the denial, but I'm, you know, I don't quite understand the objections, other than, you know, I understand septic and that type of thing. But if you're trying to avoid growth, you're living in the wrong place because it's gonna be coming. I mean, it just is. The way Sioux Falls is growing, and especially in that direction, that is the direction for Sioux Falls growth to go. But it does need to be orderly. It does need to be organized. And for that reason, I will support denying this because I think that there is probably a better way to do it.
Any other comments? Okay, roll call vote.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Hamburger.
Aye. Motion passes to uphold the planning and zoning's denial. Item number 11 is a briefing on the second quarter 2022 American Rescue Plan expenditures. Susan, good morning, Susan.
Good morning. Susan Beeman with the Auditor's Office. We are just about ready to file our quarterly ARPA report. And we wanted to bring back to you just a recap of those expenditures for second quarter and show you where we're at year-to-date with the grant as well. Just to, for, to remind you, we have received $37,514,015 from funding from this program. We did receive the second tranche of that money in June, so we have received all of those funds. For second quarter of 2022, we have spent $1,945,934.46. I won't go through the list of the programs and projects that we have allocated towards that program, but wanted you to have those details and see if you had any questions for me.
Too many questions for Susan about expenditures on the ARPA funds. Okay, and this will be an ongoing process?
It will be. You'll notice that we have two on the list that are zero so far. The facing loss revenue, which is, we can do up to 10 million. We anticipate doing that later this year. And we'll bring that back to the commission for approval to do that prior to reporting that. And then the rural fire radios were just, the bid was accepted last commission meeting, so those will be coming forward as well.
Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you, Susan. I guess we'll move on. Item number 12 is a consider motion to adopt the provisional budget for fiscal year 2023.
Yeah, so our provisional budget is required to be adopted and approved by the end of the month. And we will be, after that is approved, we will be publicizing it in the paper and on our website. So the provisional budget that you have in front of you has the changes from last week that we discussed. There were three small changes related to an additional JDC position. And then we removed about $32,000 of expenses in other areas. So the net change was roughly about a $10,000 decrease from the provisional budget from prior to that. As discussed, there was 10 positions approved in this budget. And just wanna bring this forward for your final review and approval.
Okay. This is according to state statute that we approve a provisional budget in July, and so that's what we're here for today. And we also are very happy to have all five commissioners because our schedules are crazy in the summer. So are there any questions for Susan on the provisional budget? We've looked at this many hours already and had quite a few reviews, actually publicly, too. So I don't see any questions, so I would look for a motion to approve the provisional budget.
Second.
I have a motion as second. I need roll call vote.
Karski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Hamburger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 13, thank you, Susan. Item number 13 is a motion to authorize the immediate hiring of the new positions, including the fiscal year 23 approved in the fiscal year 23 provisional budget. Carrie.
Good morning. Carrie Dever from Human Resources. This item has been scheduled right after the approval of the provisional budget for a reason. We're asking the commission's consideration of hiring the 10 positions that are part of that provisional budget for 2023 early so that we can begin immediate hiring for that. If you approve of that, the total cost would be around $270,000 for this year, all of which would be eligible for funding through ARPA.
Commissioner Bender.
So I'm in support of this. I think that we've already gone through the vetting process where we've identified that these are all needed positions. And given the ability that we have currently, the flexibility that we almost never have, that ARPA funds gives us, I think that this is a great opportunity to start the hiring process. Everybody knows right now hiring is not for the faint of heart. It takes a little time to identify the best candidates. And I just think this is a wise move on our part.
Additional comments? Commissioner Barth?
Just, you know, we did not hire every position that was requested. We cut down on a few spots. And, you know, clearly, we do have additional needs as our population continues to get bigger. And, you know, the population of the jail, the number of people going to renew their plates, and all the issues facing us are bigger every year, it seems. And so this is what we need to do.
There are no additional comments. I would look for a motion to approve those positions.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion as second. Roll call vote.
Bender.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Hamburger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Oh, we got one more for you, Carrie. Item number 14 is consider a motion to approve an exemption to the variable hour pay policy.
Each year, you know that we review our salary ranges. We do this for our variable hour and our seasonal staff as well. Typically, this is done near the end of the year. Because of some of those challenges we've been talking about with hiring and recruiting, we did that review earlier this year. Again, the positions that I'm talking about for this are our variable hour and our seasonal staff. So our variable hour, people we hire on a part-time basis, usually for less than 24 hours a week. And we schedule them as needed. Because of some of those challenges and getting juvenile correctional workers and safe home and other staff across the board, we review those salary ranges. And we would like to increase those starting September 3 of 2023. Why I'm before you today is because we'll require an exception to our variable hour pay policy in order to move some of those staff onto the new scales. Policy limits the increase any individual can receive to no more than what a full-time staff would be eligible for. In this case, that percentage would be higher. And while that might seem extreme, let me give you an example. Currently, our lowest paid position would start out at $12 an hour. I think we all recognize in today's environment that it's- I think we all recognize in today's environment that it's very difficult to hire anyone for any type of position at $12 an hour. So we're increasing that base hourly wage to $15 an hour. That's a 25% increase. It's quite a bit. So in order to get people into the new scales, we would have some people who would be receiving larger increases. If you're in support of this, in theory, what we would do is look at individual performance, process the pay increases, and then list those actual increases for your approval before September 3.
Okay. Questions for Carrie? Commissioner Bender.
I'd make a motion to approve. I just think, given the current market, this is probably passed due.
If Commissioner Bender supports it, I have to second.
That's wonderful to know. I'm going to remember that line. I have a motion and a second for the variable pay policy. A roll call vote.
Bender.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye.
Hamburger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Carrie. Item number 15 is consider a motion to authorize the Human Services Department to utilize budget salary savings from participation in the South Dakota Cares Project for the renovation product, project, excuse me, Lori Montes. Good morning.
Good morning, Lori Montes, Minnehaha County Human Services. We have been implementing South Dakota Care since December of 2021, and our staff time is billed at $50 per hour. We get payment from the South Dakota Housing Development Authority for that service that we're providing. So with that money, which currently is over $131,000 that we build and receive payment for, we would like to take just over $11,000 of that and use it to put into a remodel of our building break room. The break room is shared by the city staff as well as county staff. City's responsible for about 70% of payment of that, and that leaves 30% for county. And so we're hoping that we can use those funds to pitch in for our share of that project.
Any further questions for Lori or a motion?
I guess, long conversations with Carrie Benz are maybe not real long, but she brought this to me, and should we pay for it out of our personnel savings, or should we pay for it out of this? And just, long-term, it just makes more sense to pay for it out of this, so I make the motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second it, even though I don't like Commissioner Kerski as much.
And I'm okay with that.
What are we going to do without you? Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve. A roll call vote, please.
Kerski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Hamburger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 16, thank you, Lori. Item number 16 is authorize the Chairman to sign an amendment between Minnehaha County and SEH for MC 22-9 Structure 50-144-020 Design Agreement. Jacob, good morning, Jacob.
Morning, Commissioners. Jacob Mars with the Highway Department. This is during the design of the structure, in the past, we've always utilized what we call a desktop delineation to do our wetland delineations in the field. The Corps of Engineers has recently implemented some new rules in South Dakota, so any wetland impact over .03 acres has to be mitigated. So in order to make sure we go smoothly through the core permitting process, we are requesting to do an infield delineation for the structure.
Any questions for Jacob? Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 17 is authorize the Chairman to sign amendment between Minnehaha County and SEH for MC 22-10 Structure 50-137-040 Design Agreement.
This is the same exact thing. This structure is just a couple of miles south, but it's the same request. We have the same consulting firm doing the design of both of these structures to try to realize some cost savings through efficiency.
Okay. Are there any questions on that structure? Look for a motion.
I'll make that motion, and I have a comment.
I have a motion and a second with a comment.
You know, I kind of relied on my laminated map of Minnehaha County, that I'd pull it out and look up those bridge numbers and stuff. It's not that easy, actually, to do, and so you have to fiddle around with it to find it exactly. I can't wait to have a drawer back here with my laminated map, which I may take with me when I retire.
I agree, those maps are very useful, and I, the same, I appreciate that on theirs they have it, because I always sit and figure out exactly where that bridge is at before, when I'm doing my agendas, and it is very helpful to now have those maps on the agenda and also have my own at home, so you know what we're doing. So I have a motion and a second to approve this.
A roll call vote, please.
Barth.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Hamburger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Jacob. I think you're done. Or did I miss one? Oh, I missed one, sorry. Item number 18, crossed it off too early. Consider a motion to approve a request to purchase various supplies, parts, and equipment through a variety of state, national, and local procurement contracts.
So these contracts are ones that we would typically go over $1,000 on. We award contracts from other companies. Usually, they are government agencies, the state of South Dakota, Lincoln County's on here, Beetle County's on here, Turner County, and they're for things from tires, fuel, building supplies, culvert lining, culverts, things of that nature.
Any questions on those procurements? For a motion.
I'll make, I'll second Gerald's motion.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Benega.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye.
Hamburger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. If there are no objections, I would like to move item number 19 to, just before Commissioner Liaison Report, so after item number 21. Seeing no objections, we are moving item number 19 to behind item number 21.
I just would note, Commissioner, that on our agendas, you're using different numbers than we have.
Oh.
So I think what you're asking to remove is what we have is item 18 to, regarding the purchase agreement for the sale.
Yes, I am. Okay, so we need that publicly, that this is the purchase agreement for the property, and I'm moving that to behind, would be item number, behind the briefing on the SDACC resolutions. So just in case you're following along on your paper. So that would bring us to, and I don't know what your number is now, I believe it's, then your number must be 19, is authorize the Chairman to sign a professional service agreement with Charlie D. Smith, Architecture and Planning, for the Williams H. Lyon Fairgrounds. Tyler.
Good morning, Tyler Clack, Commission Office. Today before you is a revised version of the agreement with Mr. Smith to do the market analysis, market, market demand analysis, economic analysis, and economic impact work, which will be actually performed by CSL International. Charlie and Joel Smith, who is, or sorry, Joel Feldman from CSL International. I think Charlie and Joel are both on the line. We'll be able to answer any questions you might have, but otherwise, this is the stripped-down version that had been requested from the previous Commission meeting.
Okay. Charlie, can we hear from you first about this contract?
Certainly. Well, first of all, congratulations on your new meeting chambers, and we, from the outside, certainly appreciate seeing you and, more importantly, hearing you. So it works out very well. Congratulations on your system there. Yes, this option C is a revision that was requested by the Commissioners to really simplify the process and really focus on the market demand analysis, economic analysis, and economic impact portion of the study. We've eliminated all the physical planning and the pretty pictures and things of that nature to really focus on the economics. We still have all the stakeholder, individual stakeholder and user group interviews that Joel and I will be doing, along with a public open house to receive public input. And with that, Joel, why don't you speak a little bit about what you're going to be doing within your section there?
Sure, Charlie. Thank you, and counsel, thank you very much for the time this morning. Again, my name is Joel Feldman with Conventions Sports and Leisure International. We're a consulting firm, third-party independent consulting firm that focuses on doing market research and projecting financial and economic impacts of enhancements, improvements to multipurpose event facilities. My specialty is working with fairgrounds and multipurpose expedition centers, such as the WH Lyon Fairgrounds, and looking forward to answering any questions that you may have on our process and the scope that we have outlined in here.
Okay. Any questions? Commissioner Kerski.
I guess my only question is, will this study include a review of the fair board financial statements? When you look at the economic impact of the fair and so forth, or the fairgrounds, will you be looking at reviewing the financial statements of the fairgrounds?
Yes, yes. Thank you for clarifying. For the modeling process, the cost-benefit assessment that we conduct, both looks at the financial operations of the existing fairgrounds complex and projects the future impacts of any enhancements or improvements that would be recommended as part of our market study. We also highlight the economic benefits associated with those improvements. We would also address the potential costs to make those improvements, so you would have a full cost-benefit analysis to understand what the investment would be upfront, what the ongoing investment may be from an operational perspective, and then what the associated benefits would be back to the community.
And then, if I may, all these statements are going to be available to our task force for review, correct? Or, yes or no?
Commissioner Bender.
I think that's more a question for the Commission, and I think that the answer of that is absolutely yes. The goal of this is to give the information that we gain through this contract to the task force so that they can help sort through the cost-benefit analysis and make recommendations back to the Commission about how best to spend any dollars that we can either raise through the community or identify through other sources to enhance that fairgrounds.
I just want to thank you, Commissioner Bender. I'm glad to hear that you're thinking the same way I am, and I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we're all looking for the same outcome, I guess, or for the same direction that we're going to be moving forward on this, so thank you.
And actually, on the kickoff, I would assume and would hope that we would have the task force there to meet Mr. Feldman and have him go through the process with the task force and answer any questions they may have as stakeholders, so to speak, and be involved throughout the process.
Additional questions? Commissioner Bender? Oh, I thought you had a question.
No, I think that this new proposal reflects the discussion we had a couple weeks ago when we talked about this contract, and I think it does really pare down the services provided to the really essential economic issues that we want to look at. We want to give that information to the task force and then give the task force an opportunity to sort through that and see if there's any other financial information that they need to help report back to the Commission some suggested course of action. I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Our next item is a briefing. Thank you, Charlie. We also appreciate your kind comments about our space, and I'll tell you what, on our end, it's great to be able to see you appropriately and hear you and be able to communicate. We have new Zoom capabilities that we did not have before. Zoom was just kind of a piece together, and this is much better, so good to see you, and we'll look forward to hearing from you again.
We'll be out to see you before too long, and by the way, if you do have input into some of the stakeholders, there is a list that is, a typical list that is attached to the contract that, you know, shows some of the different groups we meet with. If there are others, you might pass that information along to Tyler or Carol, and we'll start putting that schedule together, and we'll see you out there in a few weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is a briefing on the South Dakota Association of County Commission Resolutions for the 2023 Legislative Session. Tyler.
Good morning, Tyler Clack, Commission Office. It attaches the process for submitting resolutions to the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners. These resolutions are then considered by the SDACC at their September State Convention Meeting. Department heads and elected officials were asked if they had any proposed legislation they would like to see included. As of today, we hadn't heard anything. And additionally, Commission staff have been meeting with leadership from the municipalities in Minnehaha County to identify some joint legislative priorities. Those are identified as positions that would help both the county and those municipalities collectively, and those are still under development as of today. For reference, I did attach the resolutions that were approved for last year's Legislative Session. The deadline to submit legislation, or resolutions, is July 31 to the SDACC, and I would ask if you have any comments or questions or any ideas.
Any questions for Tyler? I would say that we are working, just this morning came up with another possible resolution. It doesn't necessarily have to go to SDACC to be on our legislative platform, and, but it could still be, it could, if we could make that deadline. We met this morning with a courts and attorney's office, and there's some questions about some cleanup language about how records are stored for courts and possibly some of our other entities here in the county that are stored right now in perpetuity, and how, and the way the state statutes is, it looks like it's outdated, as in microfiche or microfilm, and we would just like to see if we could work on some updated language to some of those. I don't even know if they're statutes. They were more...
This morning, there's some...
Confusion.
Yeah, we were requesting some additional information on that, but I think that, at least in my stint on the Commission, there has frequently been some conversations about record retention and length of record retention and method of record retention, and I think that looking at the statutes that we did look at, that there is definitely some antiquated language that could be cleaned up to reflect, you know, the current electronic storage capabilities that we have, and possibly some clarification on the length of retention of different types of records.
So we will continue to look at that, and like I said, it doesn't have to be a part of the SDACC's platform, although I think that they would support it if we came up with a good resolution, even though it doesn't make it to their convention as a part of the platform. So are there anything else that we missed as far as legislative movement that we think we should bring forward? Commissioner Barth.
Madam Chair, what is the deadline for resolutions? Is it passed?
No. Well, for the SDACC, it's the end of this month, correct?
Correct.
Correct, yes, and we will be meeting as a Board of County Commissioners for the state level next week, Thursday.
Okay. All right. Is that it, Tyler?
Yes.
Okay. I would ask that we move into executive session before we move into item number 19 for the purposes of South Dakota Qualified Law 1-25-2-1, 3, and 4, and it will be brief.
We want to say we'll go over.
And we will just move into the other room. Can I have a motion to go into executive session?
That's my motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for exec session.
Will we, will we be doing liaison reports and stuff?
Yes, we've got to come right back. So immediately into the other room.
Let's go.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion passes unanimously. You people can stay right here. We're just going to go next door, and we'll be right back. back. And we will move on to item number 18, which was authorize the chairman to sign a purchase agreement for the sale of county surplus property located at 908 Northwest Avenue. And I'm going to, yeah, go ahead, Tyler.
Tyler Clack, Commission Office. So on April 19th, 2022, the commission signed a listing agreement with Ron Nelson Commercial Real Estate for the property located at 908 Northwest Avenue. The terms of that agreement included a $1,150,000 listing price and a 6% broker fee. An offer has been received and is presented for your consideration. The terms of the purchase agreement include a $1 million purchase price with $10,000 in interest, in earnest money due, and I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, and we're going to ask our state's attorney to just comment on the contract. Trish.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Eric Boggs, State's Attorney's Office, just a little history. We received the, the proposed offer and purchase agreement, or I did, last week. I made some revisions, sent that back to the offerer on Friday afternoon. We received a response back from them with an alteration to that, or renewed demand from their original version, which contains some contingencies that I did not understand the commission had approved or expected. So that, that agreement, in other words, is still in flux, so it's not finalized. The one difference at this point, assuming that you're willing to accept that contingency, which would be a 60-day inspection or feasibility study period from the offer, at which point if he finds that it doesn't suit his, his purposes, that would allow him to remove himself from that offer and get his earnest money back. I did insert a paragraph that said during that 60-day period, the county would be free to continue to market the property. If we receive an alternate offer, we would have to give notice to this original offerer and allow them five days to either waive that condition and carry forward with the purchase agreement, or to step back and get their earnest money returned. I have not, at this point, heard from the offerer's attorney. I expect to sometime today. Their offer does, just for your acknowledgement or information, expire as of 4:00 tomorrow afternoon, so unless things are agreed to or further extended, it's possible, I would hope not, but possible that that offer may expire without acceptance, so.
Thanks, Eric. Are there any questions for Eric? Okay, Commissioner Kerski?
So, we counter, they have till 4:00 to accept our counter.
No.
In, in the sense of the language of the purchase agreement, that's possibly correct legal phrasing. As to the dollar amount, nothing's changed on that whatsoever, so the dollar amounts remain consistent. The only difference between the two versions is this contingency and what happens during the contingency, so.
Okay.
To that extent, right, we have not heard back from the offerer's attorney, so.
So at 4:00 tomorrow, if they don't accept our counter offer, the offer is null and void?
Will expire by its own terms, right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there a motion or additional questions or conversation?
Move approval.
I'll second that.
What, I'm curious, what are we approving? Exactly which version? Go ahead, sorry.
No, you're fine. Can I approve the original one, which is to try and sign the purchase? It would be allowing the chairman to sign the purchase agreement for the sale of the county surplus property at, located at 908 Northwest Avenue? Do I need to add to that?
Madam Chair, again, Eric Boggs for State's Attorney's Office, my recommendation would be the, the motion should expand slightly just to make it clear that, that we're making that authorization to you to sign that with the condition, contingency as preferred by the offerer with the allowance for the county to continue to market during that 60-day period.
Yeah, that, that is what my intended...
Motion was.
Yeah, that's what I intended when I made my motion, thank you.
And I'm going to ask our recorder if she has a description of what she needs. I'll have to work with state's attorney. Okay, okay. So I have a motion and a second on that authorization. I need a roll call vote.
Kerski.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Then we will go on to liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports? Commissioner Kerski?
Myself, Commissioner Heiburger, Tyler from our office, a few others from the county attended the national convention in Denver, National Association of Counties. The, what was it, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday event was full of a lot of different seminars, programs. There were probably, I'm going to guess, 16 to 1800 people.
I think they said 3,000.
3,000, okay, I way underestimated people from across the nation that were there, so it was a very well-attended event. Quite a bit of information, yeah, to digest and to, you know, observe, and sometimes you shake your head at, but I think it was definitely worth the time. I went as part of the state County Commissioners Association. Others attended at their counties or own expense, so it was, it was a good, good event to go to. I'm glad that we're part of NACO. And as a follow-up to that, next Thursday, as I said, we will be meeting in peer for the state county association to go over our resolutions, as well as other general business of the county association.
Commissioner Bender?
Just briefly, another item from this meeting this morning that will likely be coming back before the commission is the, I think we talked briefly before, that the courts have a lot of paper records, probably rooms and rooms full, and that they would like to see reserved, preserved electronically, and so we are doing a little bit more fact-checking on that, and we'll be looking at the availability of ARPA funds for using for summer all of that project, but more to come on that.
And I would add to that, that they said, it's, we basically have three truckload trailers full of, and that's just from courts. So, just to put some context to how much records we have in storage. Is there any other liaison reports? Commissioner Barth?
Couple things. One is, at the East Dakota Water Development District, last week, we gave the district employees a mid-season raise in their salary with inflation where it's at, and also increased the compensation for personal mileage. Additionally, then last night, we met here, and all the monitors worked with planning and zoning, and we had one disputed issue which had to do with storage of, well, I'm going to ask Kevin to come up and explain it, but it's not completely solved at this point. We're giving them a few days to, to figure out the issues, but the city is, go ahead, Kevin, bio-waste is being stored in Minnehaha County.
I am Kevin Hookman from the County Planning Department. Yes, last night, we heard one item, it was to allow a solid waste facility for seasonal stockpile, stockpiling of municipal biosolids, this would be north of town. It was approved last night with, within the condition that they get a road haul agreement with the township, and the township, that road haul agreement has to be approved by August 19th, which gives them basically the next township meeting to get a road haul agreement approved with them. This will come in front of you, it may get appealed, so if it gets appealed, it'll come in front of you as a, an appeal hearing, and it will come in front of you as a solid waste permit at a later meeting, whether it gets appealed or not, because that'll be one of the other steps that the item has to have.
Would that be at a joint meeting, or will that be at just ours?
That is just at the county meeting, so.
So, Madam Chair, basically, the city started hauling their sledge from the wastewater treatment facility and dumping it on this field out in Mapleton Township, right? And without a permit of any kind, without an agreement with the township on the haul road, which, you know, it's, it's a heck of a toll on that road, and what happens is they de-water it, it dries it out, and then they put it on the ground as, as...
Fertilizer.
Whatever. At the same time, it cannot be applied on an organic farmer's property. And they operated, you know, they, they looked pretty sheepish, I thought the city guys did, but, you know, we've had other, Brandon has done their own thing like this, but they wanted to go till, when was it, September 15th, which actually was the end of their hauling season, and before they got a road agreement. We probably should have made them have a, stop hauling anything there until they had an agreement, but we gave them a couple of weeks, and, anyway, that's the story on that issue.
Thank you, Commissioner Barth. If there's no more, I'm going to add a little bit to Commissioner Kerski's National Association of Counties. This was my last one, and it was, again, I believe it's a great organization. I think I've been going for about 10 years and just continue to build relationships as you move forward and start to get to know key people. As you know, I've taken, and a lot of our staff have taken high-performance leadership training in here, and I was able to sit with Tim Rasschulte, the guy that we would all know from taking that class, and I've gotten to know him over the last couple of conferences I've gone to, and it helped us out, that connection with, right now, NACO is offering of five people to take the class for $5,000. But there was a little bit of a hiccup in the way South, the way Minnehaha County had applied for it, and sitting with Tim, we were able to figure out, you know, how that, work back with staff and work backwards, and so Carrie and I are now working again with their staff, so hopefully we will be getting that five for five for our county, which is a huge, I don't know, how many, we trained with high-performance leadership training now. Commissioner Bender and myself have both done it, Commissioner Kerski hasn't done it yet, but Monty's done it. We, we've probably had, yeah, 10 to 15 people who have taken this training, which is, which is really quite something. Anyway, so that's, relationships are continuing to be built, and we, we elected our second vice president for the association as Mr. Gore out of California, and he is, owns vineyards out there, and he will be our second vice president. Saw a lot of different conferences and breakout sessions about a lot of different subjects, but getting home late, there's just no way you can go through your notes that fast, so we'll continue to make some of the connections that I have started with there in the future, so.
Madam Chair, let me comment on NACO also. You know, we have a problem somewhere. Another county has also had that problem and solved it, so when you link up with these other counties, you can find out what their solution was, and that could be anything from an airport to a sewage lagoon to a, to a jail, anyway.
Lots of sharing going on. With the end of liaison reports, I would ask if there's any non-action commission discussion today?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
I'd like to say a couple of things. Someone, a foreign person voting without a passport, well, if they had a passport from Nigeria, they're not Americans. So, I don't use my passport when I go vote. If they don't speak English very well, they might well be American citizens. I remember when I went to register for the draft, I used my passport, which was a United States diplomatic passport, it was dependent on my father, and the lady said, "No, I need your green card." And I said, "This is U.S. passport." She yelled louder, "I need your green card." Anyway, it was very frustrating. So, just because they don't have their passport doesn't mean they're not a voter. And I would say also that on the disparate salaries for our different department heads, you know, we research salaries for similar jobs in other counties. Our HR department brings in the data, we look at what sheriffs get paid, and, you know, we could always argue about it, but actually, some of our department heads have fallen below the bar in the past and have not gotten the increases that they might have wanted. The only control we have over them is what we, the money we give them. So if they're not doing the job the way we want them to, we're not going to pay them what they want to be paid. And, you know, there's always room to dispute it. I know that the state's attorney has to have a law degree, but the sheriff has to buy his own uniforms. I mean, where's the fairness here?